Okay, great. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, School Committee. Tonight, I will be going through the presentation that I have been given to the community over the last couple of days. We had three community group presentations and a presentation for staff late this afternoon. We had approximately 240 staff members participate this afternoon in a Zoom meeting. And over the last couple of days, we've had over approximately 400 community members witness this presentation. And here where we are, what we're thinking about and all the factors that we're taking into consideration as we review the three models. Remote learning, hybrid, and a full in-school return as we look to begin school this year. So without further ado, over the last month, we've been doing a variety of actions or taking a variety of steps to get input as we plan for the upcoming school year. Last month, we surveyed parents. Approximately 3,300 surveys were emailed out to parents in the district. And we received about 1,500 responses. Tonight, I'll be sharing with you certain survey response questions and how they may influence the actions that we take going forward. As I just mentioned, we've been engaging stakeholders between the community meetings that we've held over a couple of days. We've also spoken to the Pittsburgh Police Department. We had a meeting with ECF, conversations with School Committee. Various parents have let us know their preferences or concerns over email by FBS questions. We're taking all that into consideration as we put together our preliminary plan. The State Department of Education requires Pittsburgh and school districts across the state to look at three options for a return to school this year. Those options, in no particular order, are a full in-person return for the beginning of school, a hybrid return, which would be a combination of in-person and remote learning, and then a fully remote plan. Over the last couple of months since school was let out for last year, we have been receiving guidance from the Department of Education on a weekly basis regarding a variety of matters. I'll be sharing that guidance as I go through the presentation and later on, I'll give a brief history of the guidance that we have received so far. The guidance that we're receiving and the information that we are receiving sometimes changes daily and in some cases, sometimes hourly. So before going on or continuing on, just to let everybody know, this presentation tonight is where we are today. It is subject to change. There are things we know and don't know. But before I get into that, I just want to talk a little bit about what we were required to look at before putting together our preliminary plan. The State Department of Ed asked all the school districts across the Commonwealth to prepare a feasibility study. In a sense, the Department of Ed wanted all school districts to look at their school buildings, their facilities, their transportation, their food service, how all that plays into reopening for the upcoming year. With regards to facilities, how they can accommodate students under three feet and six feet social distancing, you know, transitions between classrooms, especially at the middle and high school levels, how students access the bathrooms, where students can eat, how much social distance has to be between the students when eating. All those factors we've been looking at and gathering information. We'll talk about that shortly. Again, the three models, in-person, hybrid, and remote. Our preliminary plan has to address each one of those. One of the options or one of the factors that we have to look at going forward and really is subject to negotiations with our unions are the schedule options. One thing that's not subject to negotiation is what are the needs specifically of our most vulnerable and high need students? That remains a focus for the district under all three models. The information we're presenting tonight is preliminary. There are still many unknowns. This information could change tomorrow in any direction. One of the unknowns that we still have no concrete guidance on from the Commonwealth is our budget, our Chapter 70 funding budget. We have received nothing in writing from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education indicating what our funding will be for the upcoming school year. In addition to state funding, many of you may have seen on the news that there are discussions happening in Washington DC regarding a potential stimulus bill that could include funding for schools. We do not know at this time what, how much funding will be available and what restrictions or conditions that funding might carry. Again, the state guidance continues to evolve. I've tried to share the most current guidance in tonight's presentation. There will be more guidance coming out in coming days and weeks, and our plans may be adjusted accordingly. Lastly, one of the variables that none of us or some of us, we do have control over, but at a statewide level, the status of the COVID-19 pandemic. Back in April, Massachusetts was one of the states that had the distinction of having some of the highest infection rates across the country. The state mobilized quickly, made some key recommendations in terms of wearing masks, social distancing, washing hands, went into a state of emergency and asked for only non-essential employees to report to work. All those actions have led to a much more successful state in terms of measured by the number of people who are infected with COVID in Massachusetts. And now Massachusetts is one of the four lowest infected states in the country. Tonight's presentation also should be considered that a draft or really just informational only as we will be negotiating with our unions within the district. We may also have to undertake contract negotiations with our transportation vendors and others with regards to the services that they have historically provided under a standard, you know, our normal operating model. For a timeline of where we're at today and where we're at for the next 31 days or 33 days, I guess to be accurate, by the 31st of this month, we're required to submit the preliminary plan. Again, with the three options of remote learning, hybrid, and a full return to in-person learning. On, by August 10th, we're required to submit a more detailed plan to the Department of Ed. Under the original school committee calendar for the upcoming school year that the school committee approved, August 26th was scheduled to be the date when we have professional development for our staff in the district. And school was scheduled to begin October 31st. Two evenings ago, we received a memorandum of understanding from the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. And that MOU is between the State Department of Ed and the Mass Teachers Associations, the AFT and the Boston Teachers Union in regards to a modified or adjusted school calendar for teaching and learning. That calendar adjusts the number of days that students will be required to attend school for teaching and learning from 180 days to 170 days. And the first 10 days of the school year will now be focused on professional development and training regarding health and safety. So the calendar, we will be coming back to the school committee at some point with a new calendar. Going back to the feasibility study, we first started looking at the facilities. We looked at the facilities under two scenarios. One, under a three-foot social distancing as recommended by the World Health Organization for individuals, if everyone is wearing a mask, all students and adults in a classroom are wearing a mask, and a six-foot social distancing scenario. These distances are measured from seat to seat. If we use analogy of a stoplight, if the numbers are in green, that means that each school could accommodate the students under each of the two or the scenarios as presented, either the three foot or six foot. So a quick summary indicates that under the three-foot social distancing scenario, all of our schools, except Pittsburgh High School, would be able to accommodate a full return to in-person learning. Under a six-foot social distancing scenario, only Goodrich Academy could accommodate a full return in-person learning. We then looked at the current enrollment and really the current enrollment, to clarify, was the ending enrollment at each of the schools at the end of last school year. And we subtracted that amount, the six-foot capacity from the current enrollment to see what shortfall existed at each school. So you, as you can see in the column on the far right, Memorial Middle School and Ryangold Elementary School had the largest shortfall in terms of a six-foot social distancing scenario. Next, for your benefit and the community's benefit, there's a couple of pictures that show what three-foot social distancing or class spacing looks like in six-foot per DUC and CDC guidelines. As we looked at the facility's logistics, one area where it's required that six feet of social distancing occurs is when eating. So whether it be in our cafeteria or if students were to have meals eaten in the classrooms, there would have to be six feet of social distancing between each student. Under the six-foot scenario, many of our classrooms are too small to accommodate a full return of all students to the classroom when we open school. Another logistical challenge may be that bathrooms that typically allow for multiple students to enter become almost single-use under the current guidelines to abide by the social distancing. Like a lot of schools across the Commonwealth and across the country, the average age of our schools is about 60 years old, so modifying our facilities is no easy task. One option that we are reviewing in terms of trying to minimize social contact of students is having a cohort model, which we'll talk about a little bit more. But the goal would be to minimize the student transition between classrooms and have adults transition from classrooms to the students. Returning to the survey that we completed with parents, we asked a question in regards to transportation. In a fully in-person or hybrid model, what do you plan to utilize for transportation? And based on almost 1,500 responses out of 3,300 responses, nearly 45%, 45% of respondents reported that they would drive their child to and from school every day. 25% would ride, would require a bus each way every day. And 21% would use a combination of the bus and either parent drop off or pickup. Continuing on transportation, DUC issued guidance to school districts on how students or how many students can sit on a bus and how they can sit on the bus. As shown on this slide, the students per bench have to need to alternate between aisle and window seat from one side to the other. So you can see that with this student placement, trying to have as much social distancing as possible on a yellow bus. The yellow buses that we're, that our contractor for student utilizes are 71-capacity buses. And excluding students who could sit together from the same household, that bus for 71 passengers, the maximum capacity would only be 23. But with students from the same household, that number could be a little higher. So you can see that we're starting off with 32% ma, minimum or maximum capacity for students being transported or picked up from school. We have two transportation providers in the district, one for regular ed students. And we have another vendor that provides transportation for students whose individual education plans require such that other transportation provider currently Vanpool uses smaller vehicles, as their name would indicate vans. And in example A, they can transport four students maximum with a driver in the bus monitor or van monitor in this case. Going back to the survey, and if we extrapolate the response numbers and based on our enrollment, we could have a potential of almost 3,600 students dropped off or picked up in a full return to school model. In comparison to the volume of students picked up or dropped off during the, during the most recent school year, that's almost four times, four times increase or three, you know, 300% increase of people who are students who are dropped off or picked up. You know, our facilities or our schools, driveways, parking lots would be stressed under this scenario. And the logistics of starting school and dismissing school will need to be revisited under this scenario. We'd also need to take into consideration the traffic flow at some of our schools and their surrounding neighborhoods. Again, going back to the survey, we asked parents what their first choice of returning to school this fall would be. Forty, nearly 44% of parents selected remote learning as their first choice. 31% selected a hybrid, which would be a combination of remote and in-person. And lastly, 25% of parents selected in-person learning as their first choice. Under all of our models, I just want to stress going forward that, you know, the focus of health of our students, staff, and families is our number one concern. As we look at returning in-person, either under a hybrid or a full return, PPE, personal protective equipment will be required of all staff and students. We'll be following the Department of Ed, CDC, and Department of Public Health guidelines lines for suspected COVID-19 cases. We are looking at how to create and manage isolation areas for students with suspected symptoms. We may need additional space for both three-foot and six-foot of social distances in a full in-person model. We have investigated on a preliminary basis a couple sites if there was funding available for that. Again, we're still digesting the information and as we're on the verge of starting conversations with our union, we may or may not need additional space, but we have done some due diligence to see if space is available and some space is. Yep. In addition, cleaning and disinfecting will be done on a daily basis as per the protocols. And as I mentioned earlier, under an in-person learning, so really in-person or a hybrid when students return to the school buildings, one classroom of students may, or cohort of students may stay in a classroom while the teachers travel to them. The next two slides, I'm going to go over a couple sample hybrid learning options. Again, these options are just representative. They are not final. There are still discussions that we need to have with our, with our teachers' unions. And as we've been having these community forums over the last couple of days, digest the questions and concerns of, of parents who participated in those community forums. So under hybrid option one, we have an option two, we have four cohorts in each model. So for the purposes of this example and the next example, Cohort A would be one half of the students, and let's use with last names starting with A through L. And Cohort B could be students with last names starting with M through Z. So the A through L last name students would be in school in person in the mornings. And the Cohort B would be on Mondays and Tuesdays, would be remote in the afternoon. Thursday and Friday, those two cohorts would flip. Cohort C represents our high need students, and they would come to school every day that we see students. And actually, in both options, those are four days a week. Cohort D represents students who, for whatever reason, have elected the remote learning model and for either health reasons or other reasons, select a remote learning model from Pittsburgh Public Schools. They would receive remote learning every day of the week. Wednesdays under this option would be utilized for teacher prep and planning time and individual conferences. The second hybrid option that's been, that we're sharing with you tonight involves an A week and a B week. Under this model, a group of students would attend not two days a week in person, but would it four days a week in person, and then the next week would be remote. So in this case, the A week, the Cohort A students attend in person while Cohort B students learn remotely. And then during the B week, the Cohort B students attend school in person and Cohort A students attend virtually. As in the prior model, Cohort C students are high need students and will every day. And the Cohort D students who elected remote learning learn remotely every day.
Bob, could I just ask before you change the slide? So in this one, are you saying it's still a half day?
We, this is just being, we haven't made any final decisions yet.
No, I was just, I just wondered because I know that DUC says with cohorts, you just have to minimize the amount of possible risk or, so I just wondered, are we choosing between these models and are we also then choosing between, or are you choosing between full day and half day with the other part remote?
Well, one thing that we still have to look at too, and as we just received the MOU between DUC and the MTA, the AFT and the Boston Teachers Union the other night, is we have to look at the minimum time on learning requirements. So we need to do that in the coming days as we look at any model going forward, to make sure that we're compliant with that.
Well, right, but you can have time on learning that's remote too. So that's right. So I just was curious because this one doesn't designate.
This could possibly be, Gene, a model where, like we said here, Cohort A and C come in or Cohort B and C come in, but they possibly would leave around, could leave around lunchtime, grab their lunch, leave, eat their lunch and go home and log in in the afternoon for some online learning during that time too. So that is a possibility in this option.
Can, may I say something? Can you hear me, John?
Yes, yep.
Is there any distinction between elementary school, middle school, and high school? Because the things that I'm hearing is that elementary schools, very, very little chance of transmission.
At this time, these two models reflect elementary, middle, and high school. This would be for all students in Pittsburgh.
Have you given any thought, or could you give any thought to separating out the elementary?
So they attend in person.
Immediately, but I mean, you know, your thought process in the following days.
There's some, there's some difficulties in separating that. Because we're a district, it would affect transportation. It would affect parents who have, who have children in multiple levels. So you may have a child at Crocker Elementary, for instance, at Memorial in the high school. So the more we change it for different levels, the more difficult it's going to get for community members to be able to, to make things work. Though, though it's something I'm sure that we're open to and we should probably discuss.
Rosemary, are you, are you asking if we could possibly look at elementary students going every day for a full day?
Probably normally.
Compared to middle and high school students? Is that what you're asking?
Yeah, the, the elementary, I understand it's really negligible. Middle and, you know, it'd be different for middle and high.
Okay. Okay, okay, if I proceed?
Yes.
Thank you. Good questions. So remote learning, and there was some guidance recently released on that. You know, in the spring, Pittsburgh and school districts across the state, across the country, went to this, went to remote learning out of a, as a result of the COVID crisis and in an effort to limit the spread of the crisis. There was a lot less known about the, about COVID-19 when, you know, Massachusetts and other states closed schools. There's a whole lot more that's known about the COVID crisis now and actions that people can take to reduce this threat of the virus. Fortunately, in Massachusetts, the state and individuals in the state and in Pittsburgh have all participated in making, or not the lowest states. But looking at the remote learning model, there were many cases where we were successful in terms of learning technology and adapting teaching styles. But there are a lot of lessons that we did learn and challenges that we faced in the spring. And we, we, like a lot of other districts, ploved our way through in some cases through the end of the year. Again, we had no advance notice that we were going through this model. Some of the school committee members were in the room with the district leadership on the afternoon of Friday, the 13th. We thought we would be out one week, maybe two. We didn't know we wouldn't be returning until the following school year. There were a lot of lessons learned. Remote learning going forward will be different. It will not be a repeat of the model, the remote learning model that we implemented out of emergency this past spring. We'll be taking the coming days and weeks to look at how we, whether it's a small cohort who select remote learning or as part of the hybrid model, the remote learning will be more robust and will be, the goal will be to have much more authentic student engagement going forward. You know, one of our goals of, you know, in Pittsburgh and communities across the state and frankly, the Department of Ed, they want to make sure our students and families have devices and access to digital learning or learning over a, would it be a Chromebook or whatever electronic students or have. The goal is that each student has a device and access. And we're, in Pittsburgh, we're well positioned to provide the device and are working on the access. Might be under 10% of our students do not have access, but I know the state has funding available, is making funding available. And at the federal level, as part of the stimulus discussions, there's been conversation about the E-Rate program and how that might be able to help produce the digital divide, whether it be urban districts or in rural districts such as, you know, districts out in Western Mass and the Berkshires.
Bob, we're beginning, I reached out to Comcast this week. We're going to be getting a discussion on closing that 10% gap and, and you know, I'm not, I'm not a tech guy, but something about hotspots, that kind of thing. Challenge is going to be the, you know, is some of the families who have resource issues and but we're going to work with Comcast on that and perhaps if the state ever gets off the dime and comes up with some funding for certain things, maybe that would be one area that they could focus on.
Yep, great.
This is Jim, excuse me for one second. Uh, Mr. Mayor, will you also be reaching out to Verizon as well?
Well, the city of Fitchburg, for, for the most part is Comcast, I believe. Uh, Verizon. My understanding with Verizon is they're, they're, um, they're not quite as willing to, uh, talk about. Adjustments made to, uh, uh, fees. Now. I talked with Ed Augustus in Worcester and, uh, they've, they're having a huge problem with the person. The organization they have in Worcester, it's not Verizon or Comcast, but, uh, they won't, they won't budge. So I don't know. Uh, I, I'm told by my IT people that most. It is, I think it's Comcast is really the, the organization that we need to be dealing with. Not sure how that works, why, uh, uh, why Verizon wouldn't be part of that as well, but we can talk about that.
Thank you.
Yeah. So, um, in all our learning models, um, when we return to school, uh. You know, the focus of, uh, of our return will be social emotional learning instruction and support for students and staff. You know, as I mentioned, there's new guidance that has recently been released from the Department of Ed in regards to remote learning. Uh, there will be an attendance and grading quality and requirements, uh, forthcoming. Uh, we do not have those. You know, prepared or completed yet. And, and again, just as a reminder, going back to the upcoming deadlines of, uh. You know, submittal dates, uh, for this plan and the prior plans is like, or August 10. When we'll go into greater detail on whichever model, uh, we feel will be best to start the school year. Again, all three models for us, uh, will include, uh, after school programming. Uh, that's been provided under our 21st century, uh, as mentioned several times tonight. Remote learning, uh, option is going to be something that. Will be a part of our, uh, of our toolbox, so to speak, going forward. And we'll be looking at improving the support, um, during, you know, for the remote learning, um, as we go forward. With students out of school for three months longer than, um, than normal, uh. A key focus for us will be the social and emotional needs of our students. So we can get them prepared for learning, uh, or ready to learn, uh, as soon as possible. We are still focused and will remain focused on our special education students. And our English language learners. And we also will continue to collaborate with our outside agencies, uh, at all levels of the school district. So that's the end of the, um, community portion that we have, uh. Shared with, uh, the community on three separate occasions over the last two days. The next part of tonight's presentation. Provides some additional context, uh, to Fitchburg, uh. As a community, the state, what we're doing on the facilities front, on the procurement front. And, um, I'll start that conversation, uh, and then, uh, Mr. Shalfo will, uh. Pick up the ball as I transfer it to him shortly.
Super, um, Juggler. I have a, a thought that I'd like to just put out there, if I may.
Yeah.
Mike, you check, you, you, do you recall when we had the terrible troubles, uh, with the, in the winter? And we sent students to Lunenburg and St. Anthony's and. Uh, might we not utilize those places again? For our students and even if St. Bernice does not reach capacity. Might we not, under these emergency situations? It's just a thought I'm putting out there.
Yeah, well, I'll, 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 I'll answer the, the question. Um, so we have reached out to, um. Several, um. Possibilities. So we have, uh, reached out to St. Anthony's that we utilized, uh, as a result of the Crocker incident. Uh, they may have, um, availability over there. I just received a response today from Lunenburg and, uh, Lunenburg is planning to utilize, uh, the Paseo School. Um, so that, you know, possibility is, is not available or that option. And lastly, we visited the, uh, Boys and Girls Club in Lamonster as Boys and Girls Clubs. Um, across the state have reached out to local school districts to see if, uh. You know, their space might be of interest to us. So, um, as we again, look at all the logistics and, um. As I mentioned at the beginning, nothing is final tonight. We're sharing this, uh, really status update with, uh, school committee members. And the, uh, community at large, uh, and I guess I would say nothing is, is, is off the table. Uh, I guess conversely, I can't say that anything is, uh, formally put on the table either. Uh, as there's still, you know, negotiations with the variety, you know, whether it be internally or externally, that would need to happen. So, um, again, I just asked that, uh. The, the school committee and the public, uh, recognize that information and news is changing. You know, frequently and that we will have a, uh, plan, um, to reopen. At the appropriate deadlines there that I've mentioned earlier.
Thank you.
Uh, Bob, what is that July 31st date? Is that a, a preliminary plan and then? Plan on the, on August, uh, what is it?
August 10th.
That's right. The preliminaries on, on Friday.
Right.
Okay.
Can we make a commitment for the July 31st plan just to, to favor six feet? Um, I mean, I think three feet, when you see it in the picture, when you see it in models, um, it's just too many kids in a room.
Well, I guess we can, we can take all that feedback into, into consideration here as we, as we look at, at, at all the logistics. Yeah. If I may continue with, um, I guess call this part two.
Yes.
Okay, so, so one thing that I thought it was important for. The community to be aware of, uh, as I've mentioned earlier, um. In tonight's meeting, but also, uh, of, you know, mentioned it in prior meetings, um. Was the progress that the state has made and that's really, the state is a collection of, you know, over five million individuals. Um, but again, by, you know, the state, um. Taking, you know, the action that they did in the spring, really not, you know, only essential people could report to work. If you're non-essential, you were asked to stay home. Um, you can see from this chart, the decrease in positive test results. From the end of April through, uh, the beginning of this week. And we're now down to about 1.9% uh, of patients testing positive across the Commonwealth. Every week, the Department of Public Health prepares our statewide report. And, uh, based on information from that report, uh, our nurse leader, Pam Rivers, uh, put together this, this, uh, chart. Um, which, you know, from middle of April, it showed the number of, uh, COVID-19 cases. And then, um, in June, it started tallying the, uh, percentage of tests. Uh, which would be the, uh, the Y axis on the right, uh, side of the slide. So the percentage of people who are testing positive decreased from, you know, 14.28%. Down to, uh, one point, I think it's 1.59 or 1.63%. And from the last report dated July 22nd. And one thing that this chart does not, uh, take into consideration are the people who are no longer, um. COVID, COVID positive. So, um, that's one of the, the, the drawbacks of this chart. But you can see that our, the testing percentage in Fitchburg would be consistent with the state average. So going back to the, uh, guidance that we've been receiving over the last couple of months. Uh, I just thought I'd share with all of you what we have received and I've tried to distribute this information to. Uh, our staff, to the school committee members and on our, our website. You know, after the close of school last year, we received initial guidance. From Desi, along with a letter from the American Academy of Pediatric, Pediatricians. Uh, shortly thereafter, we received a listing of frequently asked questions and answers for all audiences that were released. Uh, in the middle of this month, we received, uh, the timelines for the submittal of that preliminary reopening plan. Which is the end of this month and the comprehensive plan documents, which is the 10th of Au- August. Um, you know, we're fortunate in Fitchburg to receive the, uh, summer support from the Bar Foundation. Uh, who is funding, uh, a third party firm called Leading Learners Institute to help us with the plan development. I have to say that I think they have, uh, taken the information that we have shared with them and have, uh. Helped put together a plan, um, that will be acceptable, you know, to submit. And we have shared that and, you know, I've shared that information electronically with you as school committee members. And also with the, uh, you know, the teachers exec board, teachers union exec board. Uh, was shared a copy of that plan last Friday. Uh, again, that is a draft, uh, that was shared with you, um, and far from final. Um, and that's something that we'll be working on the remainder of this week to, uh, submit to the Commonwealth. So last week, we, we did receive additional guidance on remote learning. That we're, uh, in the process of digesting and also on extracurricular, the band course and phys ed that was released. Uh, that information has been shared with all staff and, uh, is being taken into consideration as we look at. Um, how those courses can be offered, um, this year and what restrictions, what health restrictions would be. In place to do that. I'm ahead of myself here. Again, lastly, the, um, I mentioned earlier that the Department of Ed, uh, reached the memorandum of understanding. With the Mass Teachers Association, another, uh, state level or Boston Teachers Unions. Regarding training and length of, uh, the student's school year. Uh, where the student's school year will change for this year from 180 days to 170 days. And that there will be 10 days of additional training before school starts. Uh, and lastly, there was, uh, training, our guidance just released today, uh, on some vocational technical. Uh, the vocational technical front, um, and for us is, is not a big part of what we do, but we do have some programming up at Fitchburg High School. So I'm going to, uh, ask Mr. Shalfo to, uh. Take the ball from here, uh, for the next several slides and I'll, I'll chime in as necessary.
Thanks, Bob. Uh, just, uh, some notes here as we look to return to school. Our, our main focus is creating a culture of awareness and responsibility. As we bring, um, students, staff back into school. Um, with some very, very clear guidelines, obviously there's, there's a plethora of information. Provided by the federal government and our local governments around, um, how we should be handling our health and hygiene. And in the, the basic message is when you're sick or if you're symptomatic, you know, stay home. And, and this is the responsibility that we all have. We've adapted many of these, um, new strategies to our own personal lives. And it will be our expectations that all of our employees adapt them to their professional lives as well. Um, you know, communication really is, is the critical component to this. Um, if a staff member or if somebody reports that they are feeling ill, that it needs to be reported. Through the proper chains of building administration and notifying nurse leaders and human resources. Um, so that we can do our, uh, due diligence and tracking and making sure that we are. Providing everyone with very clear understanding of expectations around taking care of themselves. And, uh, looking forward to a return back to school. Um, a couple of documents that we have been working on, um, in sharing and receiving from a number of different school districts around the Commonwealth. Uh, but we have a, a staff COVID-19 handbook that, um, will be, is in draft form, but ready to be shared very shortly. Uh, this is a 12 or 14 page document that we'll be sharing with all members of the school communities. Which kind of highlight all of the different strategies and protocols and procedures that we would anticipate that they would follow as we return back to school. And again, all of the, um, physical distancing, uh, guidelines, wearing of masks, the health and hygiene for washing hands and, and using hand sanitizer. Um, is critically important and, and also just as we return back, even just as. A teaching staff, uh, it's critical that we have the responsibility that we're notifying our maintenance staff of, of high traffic areas. Where we're going and making sure that we're not, um, going and congregating in larger groups, which is probably a very natural tendency as we all return. So there are some health and hygiene habits that we're gonna have to put in place, as I said, that we are, you know. Used to in our personal lives that we will have to adapt to our professional ones. As far as our environmental considerations, uh, routines and protocols around cleaning and disinfecting. And, um, having trainings for maintenance staff, uh, in, in really looking at our disinfecting routines. Across the district, which may look very different from building to building from age and, and, um, school level. From, uh, elementary to middle to high school. Many of them will be very standardized, but depending on the facilities, some of them may have to be customized as well. Uh, we have plenty of cleaning and disinfecting materials in district currently. And we are looking at what our daily and or hourly disinfecting routines would be around schools. Whether they be in classrooms or bathrooms, uh, hallways, um, in all the areas that are frequently touched around doorknobs. And push plates and things to that effect. We have been working with Gale Associates, which is an engineering firm. They've done an extensive study. Of the HVAC system at Memorial and Ringle. We'll be contracting with them to do the same type of evaluation at all of our buildings. You know, as we enter into this informational age, you know, we're not the experts, but we want to make sure that we go out and get expert advice. So we'll also be working with folks who can come in and do air quality testing and advise us on. The best possible way to introduce fresh air into classrooms and make sure that we are, um, exchanging air at a rate that we should be. Let me get in the building. Yes.
Great. I'm sorry to interrupt you. That first category, training for maintenance staff, disinfecting routines, that custodial staff, correct?
Custodial staff. Much of that has already been completed.
Have they been, is any pushback, uh, CBA issues, that kind of thing?
Nope, none whatsoever.
Okay.
Greg, could I ask a question? Um, I was, I was on the state MASC meeting the other night. And, um, a lot of districts were concerned about. Backlogs for orders. And so we're listing this here on July 29th. Um, and we're expecting that it would actually be in. And I guess I wonder, is, is that a real expectation? And I think of like, personally, I can't buy Clorox wipes. I mean, I've never seen them in a store. I, once, twice since March. So where is all of this coming from? Do we have a sense, like if you consider, you have to wipe down everything that's touched and. You know, if kids are sharing anything, they have to wipe that down. Are we, do we have any projection on just how many wipes we're talking about? And like, where we're actually gonna get them?
So most of what we're using, because disinfecting wipes have been a difficult item to find. Uh, although we do have a few resources right now that say that they can get some for us within a week to two. You know, that, that supply chain is very sensitive and we are finding that. What some people can tend to promise us, and I'll get into that a little bit more in the next slide around the supply chain. Uh, but we have in district, uh, the solutions that were recommended to us for the last year that kill COVID. Um, that it would be applied in. That it would be applied in the specific, in the specific manners in which the the company is has already trained our staff. So they are going to do an additional COVID training for us, and that's going to be coming up in the next couple of weeks. We're actually trying to schedule something for next week, but we wanted to do it virtual so that we could have all of our employees participate in it from the maintenance staff. So we're in pretty good shape right now as far as having the materials in district that we can wipe desks down, we can wipe doors down. Most of it should be sprayed and left to dry. Obviously, if there are students nearby, that's not the best way to do it. So we do, did, we have purchased a number of additional wipes. They would be single wipes to spray the solution down. It's a single wipe that you would wipe with gloves on. And then they would be deposited in the appropriate receptacles that we've all still purchased for the classrooms. So just a little bit more about the environment, you know, we're also working and will be working again individually with with building administrative teams around building management, social and physical distancing, traffic flow, doors to come in, doors to leave, types of furniture under the three-foot recommendation. You know, we have probably 75 to 80% of our furniture in classrooms throughout the district are actually tables and not individual desks. So we're looking at the need to purchase separators. We've explored the opportunity or the options of actually storing tables and purchasing new desks and chairs. But those are things that we're still considering, but we're all, we are looking at the dividers for individual tables. Plenty of handwashing solutions and hand sanitizer that we have in district and will be providing for each classroom in in high-traffic or localized area around main offices and hallways. And then just to answer your questions around P P Es and supply chain. So the state has in the Operational Service Division, O S D at the state level, has provided pretty much one-stop shopping for state contracts, which eliminates us from having to go outside of these credited supply chains. I must receive 25 to 30 emails every day by salespeople trying to sell masks and trying to sell a variety of other materials. So everything that we're purchasing will be purchased through the state contracts, which, you know, will also provide us with the best costs. But we do acknowledge that the supply chain is very sensitive and we've been working with vendors. And in some cases, certain supplies will be in within a week and others two weeks. And then we've heard for for some things, three to four weeks. And that seems to change because as it becomes available, many of the the vendors are filling orders as they come in. So we have, and here's just a list of, and this is a short list of items that we're looking for for face shields, for disposable masks for adults and the pediatric size for our children, specialized masks for nurses, in gowns, disposable gowns, other supplies that Ms. Rivers has been purchasing for her nurse nurses offices. We are entertaining the idea of having a 20 by 30 tent at each location to be used either as an area where students could take a mask break or could actually be used as a isolation area during the during the good weather. Done a lot of research and looking at the disinfecting foggers. We've had two in district this summer that we've used extensively. And basically, we could shut down a bathroom. We could fog it, which would take us about a minute. And then we would keep it locked for about nine to 10 minutes. So we could actually do a complete disinfecting in a in a bathroom in about 10 minutes and be able to open it back up for use. And as I mentioned earlier, the the actual spray disinfectant that we have that the custodial staff can apply using backpack sprays, it's a little low-tech compared to the foggers. But it does the same type of job that they could do walking down the hallway or getting hand railings down or in the stairwells. So this is just, as I said, a short list of of P P E that we have orders in and orders that we're currently working on to get ready to prepare for having children in school.
Could I ask another question, Craig? So it's two questions. The foggers is the intention that like every hour, somebody's going in and fogging the bathroom. Were all bathrooms? I mean, how is that going to work? And then the other thing is it can get pretty expensive to keep yourself in masks. And when you're talking about proper mask wear, if kids touch their masks and move them around a lot, they they take a break, right? Technically, they're really not supposed to put that same mask on if they've disrupted it, right? And so I don't think any, I don't think a lot of people do masks the right way. So are we looking to have any kind of fund to help provide masks to people? Is there some kind of a drive to kind of make a lot of them and distribute them? I just think it can be very expensive.
Yes. So we we have, we're in the process of purchasing masks to be available to anyone who would need one. The consumption in the in the the number that we would be using is yet to be determined. I would assume that most of our adult staff would have something that they would prefer to wear, but we would still have disposable masks available to them. Same thing for the students. The state has recommended that families provide their own. But we have a plan to have an ample supply on buses for students in the morning that may forget theirs. I was in middle school for many, many years and have handed out many bus tickets. And three minutes later, that bus ticket is missing. So we can make some assumptions that that we're going to need plenty of masks for students who may leave a classroom with one and then return without. So yes, we're planning on having this type of equipment available as necessary. The the real question is what type of consumption will we see? In what type of an order or continuous order? So we're making a big order to get us started and then we'll we'll plan to see what type or how many masks we're using per building, per level, and then we'll adjust our purchasing accordingly.
May I ask, is this an opportune time to ask a question?
Yes, Rosemary.
Yeah. So I have three. One is superintendent said this 1% positive on our tests. Isn't that almost like negligible?
I believe that I believe the state right now is running right around 2%. And I believe the Pittsburgh positive rate is just under that. I think that last number was 1.63%.
At what point now, at what point are we all clear?
Not now.
I think we would be all clear when Dr. Fauci tells us we are. It's everything that is out there is really that this virus is out in public. And if we're not taking the proper precautions to mitigate its spread, then then you will see these cluster spreads and
It could swing back.
They just alluded to one that happened down the Cape. Yep.
Another thing is the K-Mat is empty. Did might you think of seeing if you could utilize the K-Mat?
K-Mat has come up in in conversation.
It's a big, big empty space with lots of doors.
Using it for what?
Temporary classrooms.
It's privately owned. It's a corporation in Manhattan, New York. They're not. Believe me, I've been in conversations with a prospective developer who wants to purchase it and they they're not quite receptive to Pittsburgh, partly because they don't even know where the hell we are. All right. So if you if you get my my drift. Yeah. So but yeah, that's 100 and 115,000 square foot building. That's a huge building.
Maybe they could ask.
Yeah, well.
And then another thing is we're coming upon flu season. And there's all of these things that we're planning to do. Can we foresee that it's also effective for the flu?
I I think most of, well, yes, all of the disinfecting protocols and procedures would probably help in the spread of influenza and the common flu as well. But you know, as scientists have been warning us for a while that, you know, come flu season, you know, and and as students or as folks become more symptomatic with similar symptoms that you almost have to treat everyone until you can confirm that they're not COVID, that the illness is not related to COVID. But yes, I would assume all of these cleaning procedures would in some form or fashion help help that.
This is Bob. If I can just interject, the state in our D E C in one of its guidelines recommends that all adults receive the flu shot before the start of school year in a way partly to kind of mitigate the, you know, the diagnosis chances of the unknown. So if more people receive the flu vaccine for this upcoming season, then it will, I guess, with their philosophy is that that will rule out less fluke-like cases. And potentially, if people are experiencing illness, perhaps it may may be more COVID-related symptoms. In many cases, the symptoms are similar. But D E C is recommending people get the flu shot the coming winter.
Any other questions? All right.
Keep going.
Yep, we can keep going.
So I I think, you know, we'll have some more slides, but I I hopefully everyone's hearing that whether it be the the staff, the students, the families this year, we're all going to have to be nimble and flexible. Whatever plan we open the school year with may not be the same plan that we are at one month in, two months in, six months in, or at the end of the school year. It's very possible that we could go between all three models of in-person, hybrid, and remote. So again, I, in in addition to being nimble and flexible, just the number of variables that there are variables that we can control and influence. And then there are variables that we can't control.
Bob, you've you've got 43.8% of families who want remote anyway. So it's going to be remote, like a lot of, a lot of stuff is going to be remote. And I'm not sure if that broke down by school or school age group. I don't know if you, if you have it parsed to that level.
We do have that information from the survey by school level. Yeah.
So regardless of what model, remote has to be a part of it because you've got people saying that's what they want. So it's just going to be, that's going to be a constant, right?
Yeah, I I think I think remote, remote will be part of our learning model. However, we open throughout the school year and how or how we end, maybe for a small section, maybe for the whole district. We're not in a position to say, to make an announcement tonight. We're, you know, we're we're sharing out our findings, you know, in a variety of sources. You know, one of the things that we were concerned about when we made the decision to close a school for a week before the governor intervened back on March 15th was the need for our students to be in our schools. That was our number one concern then. It's our number one concern now, their health and safety. We have had conversations with D C F, as I mentioned earlier. Our conversations give us a pause and really motivation to have our students be in our schools as much as possible. A lot of our our students have been out of school for three months longer than normal. What we would, where we would normally have the normal summer slide, we're not sure how high that summer slide will be this year, whether it be in terms of academics and or social emotion. So you're right, remote learning will be a part of of our learning model tonight. We can't say how much. And but again, I think we, our teachers, our staff, want to have our students come back as much as possible under the, you know, safe conditions that we're striving to meet based on the guidance and the status of the virus. So.
Can I ask another one? I'm sorry, but there's just a lot of questions and so without going into a lot of detail, I can just say throughout this period, there have been a couple of instances when we've been notified, somebody that you hung out with or came in contact with has been, is getting tested for COVID, right? And we've waited like a week and we've been responsible and not kind of got out with other people or were mixed very much. And if you ask, if you extrapolate that to all the families who probably are having situations like that and you think of teachers who are having situations like that, or they have had some symptom, because the symptoms are things like a sore throat, right? Like, so regardless, my big concern is substitutes. Like I know on a good day at Pittsburgh High, there are a lot of kids in the cafeteria who don't have a teacher that they can be with. And so if we're talking about these kinds of criteria that would keep you home or that would be the responsible thing to do to not be in a building, what's that plan?
Well, you know, one of the things that we'll be looking at is, you know, teaming, whether it be at Pittsburgh High School or middle or elementary school to provide coverage. We recognize that substitutes, you know, whether it be in Pittsburgh or you know, any budding district really across the state, there was a substitute challenge to begin with. It's going to be, you know, much more, it's going to be more difficult. There there's no dancing around it.
But if I'm a parent, Rob, and you're telling me that I'm, I, it's it's safe under these guidelines, as safe as it can be to send my kid to school and you're going to keep that six-foot barrier or you're going to like, I think we just want to, parents want to know that regardless of whatever you know, teaming or logistics need to be handled, that their kid is still going to be under the circumstances that they expect.
Well, I I think this is the circumstances is expect, I think that's where you know, everybody's going to have to have some flexibility and be nimble. Gene, because we don't know until we start what scenario we'll be facing.
I'm not trying to be difficult, but
No, I know, I'm, 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 I'm.
No, I'm not going to be flexible about my kid not having the safety precautions, right? So and I don't think that's really what you're saying.
No, that's not what I'm saying. No. No. But I guess let me maybe clarify. So in regards to if a teacher is out and that's where maybe, you know, the teaming approach can help mitigate that. You know, the safety precautions and guidelines that we have seen, you know, are very thorough and, you know, they they're going to take a lot of our time. There's, there's no way to disregard that fact. And and again, the safety is of our staff and students is extremely important. But again, where if a teacher, you know, there is, there is guidelines for testing. You know, if teachers feel ill, as Mr. Shalfo was saying earlier, if teachers feel ill or students feel ill, the recommendation is to stay home. There were, there were guidelines and processes that D E C has shared with school districts across the state that if people test positive, you know, how long they that if people test positive, you know, how long they are required to stay out.
Or even how long they have to wait for the result of the test, Rob, because we're just not there. Like, some people will say, oh, it's two days, but in the experience that I've had this summer, it's one seven.
Yeah, well, I, I mean, I can speak personally, I think it's, it's, it's changing. And I know people have had same-day testing. And then again, I know there are people who are waiting several days or longer for test results. So it's, I can't tell you what it is today, I don't know, but I know the testing availability is, it changes from day to day and. So, I'm, I'm, I'm not in the tested, the, the COVID tested, we're not in the COVID testing business. I can only share what, what I either have experienced amongst our staff or what I'm hearing or seeing on the news, and you're right.
Bob, this is Jim, and I, I'm not sure what slides are coming up. Like, my questions can wait till the end, but I have just a couple of questions about the fall opening. One is the preliminary report that's due this Friday, how preliminary can that report be? How detailed does it have to be when you submit it on Friday?
We were required to give a summary of each of the three options.
Okay. So very broad descriptions?
Yes.
Okay, okay. One of the other questions I have is, what happens to a school if a teacher, staff member, or student does test positive for the virus? What, what, I don't know what the policy is by DESI or if there is one.
Yeah, there's, there's guidelines in terms of tracking down that, you know, trying to, I guess, trace is the correct term, that students contacts as much as possible to see who that student could have been around.
Is, is it, is it possible, possible that?
Jim, sorry, I didn't wanna.
No, go ahead.
In addition to that, too, they recommend, you know, if, depending on the severity of the outbreak and how widespread it may be, shutting down and, you know, sending home certain, closing down certain rooms or certain wings of the school, depending on where it is, there's all different types of guidance and all that, that the state has put out that we'll share with you.
Okay, and I think that's where the mitigation procedures come into play is, you know, there are, even where the virus would potentially be in a location, if we're all washing our hands, if we're all taking all the precautions that we should, it's really gonna limit the possibilities of transmission. And then if there is, each scenario would be quite different.
Thank you.
Okay, you know, we are kind of in the home stretch of the presentation. I, I appreciate everybody's patience, there's a lot of material to go over tonight, but we wanna update you on the community of where we're at in regards to, you know, the reopening. But also, we have some other information that is important to share with the community, so. You know, returning to facilities and MSBA project, I guess I'll pass the microphone back to Mr. Schalfo.
Thanks, Bob. So just really quick update on our MSBA projects, particularly at Crocker, the Crocker Project. The feasibility study extension was approved by the MSBA. And I believe in our last school committee meeting, Sam came in and called us and presented the preliminary designs for both new construction and renovation. Since that time, MSBA has requested a few pieces of information from us, but it's been fairly quiet. We do have a planning meeting tomorrow, so if we do meet again next week, we'll be able to provide you with a little bit more up-to-date info from since the last meeting. Wanna go to the accelerated repair projects. So here, just some quick update, we have two ongoing projects at South Street Elementary School. This is, these are pictures from the roof, which many people have seen, the scaffolding wrapped around the building for the last several weeks, the demolition is underway. And meeting with the construction team today, they are hoping to be actually putting shingles on in about two weeks. So as you can see, they're, they're working on slate removal and they're working on putting down the membrane in order to install gutter systems and also install the shingles on top of.
Craig, this, this shingles, of course, asphalt, right? They're not gonna be slate.
Correct, yep, that's correct, yep. And again, just another picture of, you know, this, this whole section of the roof has, the slate has been removed and disposed of. Excellent, yep. And in the boiler, the boiler room project has been a little slower. The abatement of the actual room took a little longer than they had anticipated. They are about a week behind at this time, but they are planning on coming in working both this Saturday and Sunday. This is just a picture of the truck, I think the foreman that I spoke to was amazed that the boilers in the plumbing, this was all piping that was removed and that was all hand-screwed in together with, with elbows and knuckles when it was originally installed. And they said it was quite a project taking it out. And here's the actual room where the boilers will be replaced on the left-hand side. They ran into, again, this is about a thousand gallon hot water tank back from the sixties and it was also lined with cement, so that certainly slowed down the process of removing it. And you can see them, they're actually cutting it out piece by piece and removing it. And on the right-hand picture, that's an actual, that's where the new boilers will be going. So they'll be in over the weekend, power washing and getting ready to pour the cement platforms that the actual new boilers will be installed on starting next week. And based on our conversation today, all the equipment necessary to be installed is here, not on-site, but they have it, so they're just ready to move forward with the project. They have about a week to catch up on after the abatement slowdowns. And that's it, questions on MSBA?
Craig, I love seeing the South Street work going on, and I didn't know the extent of the boiler situation. So this is a tribute to the, certainly the school committee, school department, and the city, you know, for taking care of situations that existed far too long. And really, I'm thrilled about the fact that we're restoring, certainly the South Street. That main building is, it's a beautiful building and getting that roof tightened up and correcting the leak, leak issues that we had along with the concrete work that we did last year. So.
And the construction team is very excited about getting it back to looking like it should. And in my conversations that I've had with them now over the last several weeks, they take great pride in the work that they're doing and, and, you know, our OPM and designer are really looking out for our, on our behalf.
Thank you.
Craig, the, the Farmer Holy Family High School adjacent to the main building, what is that used for?
The north building?
If you, if you're facing from the street, looking at the main building.
Yep.
The scaffolding up to the right.
South building.
South building, John, I'm gonna, you spent much of your life in that.
Much of my life in Pittsburgh in that building. So that is home to first grade, second grade, and third grade right now.
Of the Farmer Holy Family High School.
Yeah, yeah.
For a second and third.
Yep.
Okay, so. So we've presented a lot of information to you and received a lot of comments from you, and we appreciate that. I'm recommending that we hold another school committee meeting next Thursday evening as we prepare to submit our final plan shortly thereafter. So we could either have it next Thursday or the report is due, or the final plan is due on Monday. So I'll leave it up to the chair in terms of which day works better for the school committee members.
About Wednesday.
We might need time just to help complete the plan.
What is it, Bob, to get the, the, look, thirty-first is Friday. It's just for the, for the fourth, for the August fourth deadline?
It would either be the August fourth or, you know, the following Monday.
Well, what are the wish, what's the wishes of the committee? We can do Thursday.
Thursday works for me.
Both days work fine for me.
Thursday, the sixth.
Would that be, I don't know, is that the sixth?
Oh, it's the sixth, August sixth, yep.
Okay. Yes.
It works.
I just, I do have some more questions in case this is going into a wrap-up.
Go ahead.
So one thing that, as you guys are talking about the plans, if you are, if we're, if you're, if your primary plan is going to be remote, I think there still could be an opportunity for kids to get together with social activities that would be outside, that could be planned with smaller groups and cohorts so that they could see one another if they're, it wouldn't have to count as part of the nine-hundred-and-ninety hours. I don't think it actually would count as part of the nine-hundred-and-ninety hours, but I do think it would be important for kids to be able to see one another and do some kind of thing out on a football field or something like that. And then the other thing is that I think there's gonna need to be a fair amount of forward training and now that you have the extra ten days before the school year starts, I think there should be a plan, whether it's run by student governments in the buildings or whatever, to really have an orientation to students about mask, proper mask wear. And I, I will tell you that I drove through Wendy's the other night with my kids and there wasn't a single kid working in Wendy's who was wearing their mask the correct way. Not a single one, and whether you're, you know, wherever you happen to drive through, you should pay attention to kids and how they're wearing their masks. And I think there should be some kind of a parent form that they have to sign that says they've gone through, like we have with the handbook, that that parents are aware of what the expectations are of their kids. And if their children are not wearing the masks, because it all hinges on kids wearing the masks appropriately. And I've worked with kids all my life and I love them, but this would not be their wheelhouse. This is not what they do really well. And so we're gonna, we're gonna really need to condition people while they're in the building, because once they're out of that building, they will not be socially distancing. And so, and they're not right now, a lot of kids are not right now. So we've gotta protect the adults in the buildings. We've gotta get the kids back, I understand that, but you've got a lot of teachers who are relying on diligence of people making sure kids are wearing the masks correctly.
Thank you.
Bob, I just wanted to say I appreciate your work. I mean, this is tremendous, tremendous exertion, thank you very much.
It's a team effort, I've said that throughout the last couple of years. Not only the people, staff members on this call, but there are other staff members who have been helping have, you know, dialogues, looking at options, creating plans. You know, we're, we're on a journey, we're not there yet, there's a lot of factors to consider. You know, no school district in the country has gone through this before, just like remote learning, we're all collectively going through this experience together. We know a lot more now than we did in March, April, May, and June. We wanna do what's best for, you know, students, staff, and families. And that's, again, the information that we shared with you tonight all has that goal.
Thank you, everyone.
Yeah, so before, I guess we break for tonight, we do have one action item to submit the technology grant, is that right, Craig?
Actually, we have two, we have our Remote Learning Technology Essential Grant, that's a grant for four-hundred-and-forty-six thousand dollars to be used by the district to support our remote learning needs around technology and access to the internet. And then we have a second, the Coronavirus Relief Funds Grant, that's a one-point-two-six-million-dollar grant based on two-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars per student, and that is to be used for our efforts in reopening, purchasing PPEs and getting our buildings ready to bring kids back.
All right, we need to vote on this?
Motion to submit the grants.
Second.
Motion made in second, we need a vote by individual, so let's see if I get this right. Stevens.
Yes.
This Reynolds.
Yes.
This LaBelle Pierce.
Yes.
Aiden Horgan.
Yes.
I am a yes, and Mr. Walsh.
Yes.
I think that, is that, and Mr. Stevens, did I get you, Pete?
Yes, you did, first.
Okay, is that everybody? I didn't leave anyone out, right? Right, that's unanimous, thank you. Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Yeah, I guess maybe if I could just make one final comment, I guess just to, while we're on summer vacation and comments made by, you know, a couple of the school committee members, although it's summer vacation, I guess there is no vacation from COVID and for everybody to stay vigilant, to wear masks, social distance, wash your hands. That's the only way we're going to make progress so that all schools in Massachusetts can reopen in full and can return to normal life. So I realize there's been a lot of interruption over the last year and going forward, we want to try to minimize that interruption and have returned some sense of normalcy to our families and our students' lives, including our staff's lives. So that's what we're gonna work for and doing it in a safe manner as well, so that's, that's our goal. You know, if we thought last year was challenging, I think this year will, will be another challenge, a little bit different. We know more than we did last year and we thank the, the school committee for its support.
So just to go over this again, we will, we will meet next Thursday, six PM. Mr. Thompson, you'll get it set up with our Zoom information?
Yep, I'll handle that.
All right, so that's six PM, Thursday, the sixth of August.
Okay, good night, everybody.
Motion adjourned.
Motion adjourned.
Motion made.
Thank you, everybody, good night.
Thank you.
All right, thanks, everyone.
Night, everybody.